And when the, when the retirement was changed, I think that was before you Larry, there was some miswording in the documents of the retirement packet. Uh, I know it screwed a lot of people over here for many, many years, some decades. Uh, was the elected officials retirement package changed as well, or do they still get the same benefits? I know you guys might not know the answer off the top of your head, but if these can look into that because from what I'm understanding, the people that worked here for fifteen, twenty, thirty years as hourly employees. They got screwed with this retirement update, but yet the elected officials.
When was the update, Jeff?
Last year since I'm correct. Wasn't it last year?
What, I don't really.
When Heidi Zullos found that wording that was wrong and a lot of people left because of the.
All because of the house benefits.
Right.
That's, some people that have left.
That wasn't until then?
That's, I don't think that's even in place. The, the rule is for pension, Jeff, it's on Act ninety-six. It is twenty years, fifty-five years of age of service. Fifty-five, the magic number is a superannuation payment if you worked twenty years. So at the age of sixty, more than most people do leave, they don't have the twenty years, it's superannuation, the other number is sixty years. If you started here with us, you turn sixty and you work for us for three years, you do get a pension, there's no like, in the beginning, you have to be vested. It's five years till you're in the pension system. So no, none of that has changed, it's still the golden rule. You can leave here before your twenty years, Jeff, and, or at your twenty years and not be fifty-five, but you don't get a superannuation, which is the full payment, you just get a little lesser.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll try to get more clarification on that, on what I got. Uh, last thing is any update on the security at the appeals?
I talked to Jerry Gudey, I think the shirt's been down a few times.
Okay.
And they had the car there. I, I know you had the one incident.
There was two or three, but yeah.
But I mean, one.
Right, right.
Escalated.
Right.
And so now we're gonna have, if some of these hostile, we want them sent right to that primary board instead of it going somewhere else, but yeah.
I'm not sure if that primary board is gonna be able to stop something if it goes, you know what I mean? People are, people are at its end with not only this, but a lot of things in the world and.
But overall.
I think we're just kicking a can down the road with this because if something happens, I've been saying it since day one. A lot of people are losing a lot of stuff there and a lot of people work their whole lives where they anticipate losing their own, which, I mean, that's, you know, like you hear it every day too.
I've been down.
A lot of people are at its end and I think it's something that should be done, but I just wanna put it on record.
Yeah, overall.
Something's gonna happen eventually, I think.
Overall, I think it's been going pretty good.
Right.
People have been, when I was told, people would be applying through the law department, boards are doing a good job, I think they're going through a hundred, hundred and twenty yields a day, hundred and fifteen of yields a day.
Thirty-two, yes, two days ago, so it was just one, it was just one.
One of the boards, right, how's, how's it going, how's the public experience so far?
I think it's good, I mean, the. I don't know how much I can say, but I mean, because Larry did come and sit in on one at the end of the day, uh, there was a mistake and, you know, we heard that.
They are filing, listen, that's why this process is there.
Right.
They're, you know, this isn't, our boards aren't vision employees.
And that's what people, that's what we're trying to explain to the people.
It's the county, it's their opportunity to come to our boards and make their case about the progress. That they don't think their values are right, or they think their passing is wrong, and they found mistakes, this is their opportunity, that it's not vision, it's our board, it's county board.
Right.
To hear, and overall, there is mistakes being found, there is corrections being made, there is corrections, I know one that the correction went the other way.
Right, and, no, that's one thing that I'll say, I mean, we've asked, multiple people have asked for information as far as formulas and how you come up with this and how you come up with that, it'd be more helpful if we were able to explain it to the people as well. Because we're not able to, so we've asked multiple times, can we get these formulas, can we get these evaluations, so we can factually explain it to people and we're not able to, I mean, you sat on another one. They purchased it not even three months ago.
Yes.
And it was almost two hundred thousand dollars more than what they purchased it for, so, uh, the numbers are skewed, but that's what these boards are for, to hopefully try to get it in check.
Get them straightened out, and, and most people are coming in with political arguments, a few people sort of have appraisals, I've been on a few, I know they're letting, if somebody has somebody with them, you're letting the other person talk. You're letting, if they have an appraiser, if they are returning with them, if they have a family member.
Yeah, and that's the one thing, those, there was, and I know, and the, uh, appraisers are allowed to talk, it was something, so, I know multiple appraisers, I don't wanna mention by name, but we allowed them all to talk.
That's, that's.
So that's the whole point of it, because they have the knowledge and, you know, that background, but we do let them talk as much as.
Yeah, I went to every individual board and asked them, how, and they all said, my dad was down, I asked, and they all said, yes, we let appraisers talk, we let family members talk.
And I think, I think a mock appeal, or even one that's being done now with permission of the people, I think should be posted online for the people, because people are coming in a nervous wreck and they walk out and they're just so easy, and so. People are so scared, and they were scared to appeal it too, I think if we did a mock appeal, that would've helped the people out a lot, just to know what to bring, how to do it, it's a little late now for the people that already did it, but I think it would be helpful, so.
One more thing, Jeffrey, thank you for creating a helpful process.
No, no, no.
Boards are doing, and boards are doing a good job, I've been down it numerous times. You know, overall, the board seemed like they're doing a really good job, that, you know, said, I think, a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five a day total.
If not more with the.
If not more, because sometimes there's multiple appeals with one.
Oh, yeah.
Person, but I mean, just, it seems like it's going pretty, it's overall, it's going pretty good, you have a few, like you said, you have a few people that are right, right, but overall, most people are calm and going through the process.
Right.
And the board are doing a really good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, George Stankovich, Ali Hato, uh, another thing, uh, like, like Jeff brought up, you know, a lot of people are afraid, because if they're at that, they didn't have any change, or it came down a little bit. They think, well, if I go in there and, and, see, this is what's the problem, they don't understand it, and like Jeff's saying, that they're, they're afraid of actions being negative toward them and they don't wanna do anything. But I haven't had my opinion yet, but, uh, another thing I wanted to know is, uh, uh, I don't, I don't know anybody here who knows the answer, I just asked back here. That, uh, when I looked up my property, it only goes back to nineteen sixty-one. And what, it went through like four hands before I had it, but it looked like, I, I've seen when I first looked at property, my property, it was an old coal sign under it, and I know. Almost a hundred percent of this area is coal region, so an old coal company had a habit at one time or another. Now, I was told to, to ask, uh, Caitlin over here in the assessment office, uh, maybe she could look back on my records and go back, but I mean, if there's anybody else, you know, that maybe that's a way to, they can go over and straighten that out. But, uh, uh, and I don't, I wanna go on this too, like I said, the people over here, the whole bunch that talk, they've been very nice. And, and the people have to understand, these people have nothing to do with the adjustments or anything like that, they're just doing their job there. So I don't want anybody going in there screaming at them, because they, they don't have nothing to do with the new assessment or anything like that. And if we keep calm, just like Jeff said, it's an appeal that you go through, you'll, you state your case. And you'll come back with a, a good answer or a not so good answer, but then, if you have to go to the next step, that's when you go to the, you know, appeal, yes, the court appeals. So anybody out there, please, if you have any doubts or anything like that, I know it, it's too late now for them this year, but.
You can appeal next year.
They can appeal next year, they have to remember that, you can always appeal when you feel something isn't right. If you were afraid, or, or you weren't sure, or something like that, you could go down the line, just keep calm, I know it, just like Jeff says, a lot of people are losing, are gonna lose their homes if their taxes went a little higher. Because they can't afford what you're doing right now, this is my, you know, and like I said to you, and you agreed with me many times, they gotta come up with a better system.
I love that.
This, this is ridiculous, it, it's absolutely ridiculous, because every case, I don't care what family comes in there, there's gonna be some type of difference. And, and, and what they earned and everything like that, when I bought my home, it was affordable, and I was working a lot of overtime, my wife was working, and now we're not? It's a big difference, it was a, it's a big difference right now, so what I was doing when I was working, yes, I could afford, and I didn't think much of it, I didn't think much of it, I'll be honest with you. But now that I'm on a set income, now I'm worried, just like these people out there are worried, so that's what it's all about. Try to stay as calm as you can and just go through the process, if you didn't do it this year, do it next year.
Chris, Chris, if they want to appeal next year, right around when you have your first tax bill from the county and municipal, is when you can start looking to file, if you wanna file appeal, a, a normal appeal year, isn't that around the timeframe?
Correct, because the first two months will be given the application and the rules and regulations to the solicitor's office to approve them. And then we usually have that happen for March when the bills go out and people start calling.
Okay, so when is it?
The legal appeal next year is when you get your tax bill from the county and municipal.
Okay.
If you wanna appeal, right around that time is when you.
And you have about two months to do it.
About two months.
Well, you, no, they'll have till September first.
Oh, September first.
Annual appeals day.
Yeah, because they're gonna be back to the.
See, that, see, that's, that's a knowledge that a lot of people out there don't know about, you know, you, you think that, you know everything, and then you go in there and you're blindsided or, or something that you didn't understand. Just like the Homestead Act, you know, you gotta file for the Homestead, I, I think that starts in, end of December or, or January.
It gets mailed down around December fifteenth, and the deadline to have it back is March first.
Okay, and that's another thing, you know, people that aren't on it, please get on it, because that will help.
Make sure you're in Homestead, maybe the first thing they ask, a lot of boards ask is, are you not in Homestead, if you should file for Homestead, you know, if it's clean green eligible, are you in cleaning green? You know, they're, they're finding a few that people are not enrolled in the, in, in Homestead or cleaning green, when they have the opportunity to be.
Yeah, and I notice a lot of, they say, when a person hits a certain age, like, I guess it's sixty-five or something like that, if you aren't on it, they might send you a notice or something like that, or, or they'll just put you on it.
But you don't know if they must put people on it.
I don't either, but.
On what?
No.
The Homestead, no, that you have to, you have to file on it. Okay.
The only way they can just put on it is if we take them off by an error or something like that, then we'll put them back on it, but they don't just call in and say, hey, it's my grand, don't.
Just make sure you're in, in the Homestead, the, the time, the, they expire for Homestead already for this year, you can apply for that next year.
Right.
And cleaning greens extended to October, November, October fifteenth was extended by the board.
Cleaning greens, fifteen.
Your right line. But I can tell you this, I didn't apply for it, but when I came in to argue about, one time about my, uh, they asked me, are you on the Homestead?
And then.
And then, then they put me on it, that's how, how that.
So you just gotta make sure people know that information.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other thought or comment?
Yeah, one more, uh, six week commissioner's tendency, conservation district annual award last night, they want to recognize Josh Sofia, he won the media award last night, so congratulations. Support the district, Carrie, you're on, you represent the district, so.
Yes, so, uh, again, I think there was about eight or nine awards given out, the Farm of the Year, Volunteer Educator of the Year. Uh, a lot of good people that have definitely kept conservation, quality of water and so forth, uh, flowing and, and, and helped the conservation district in their endeavors and what they do, so. Uh, it takes a team and a team of success to, to do this, and we appreciate the general public up here. It's a great organization, a small staff, but they do a lot of things down there, so, one of the great nights.
One of the big things I liked is you do a lot of outreach to the schools and kids, they get involved, you know, to evolve the environment, you know, a lot of times you sit at home, computers, cell phones. They get out and get involved, you know, you go to the street or a lake, hikes, something, that's, that's the big thing, like, they do, and also a, you know, a balance between development, environment, and to keep that balance. It was a real nice, really good jobs, talking about events, you know, we got recognized on Saturday, the Inglewood Fireman Convention, it was great, it was very hot. Long and hot, but it was a very nice parade to see everybody come together in school county, all fire companies, fire companies from way outside our area participating. And then also that night, it was the hundredth anniversary of the Northwoods Championship win, so it was a busy weekend.
Well, it's hard to believe that working my past thirty-five years, at that, that level probably I didn't know in long enough that you celebrate thirty-five years, or so.
Committed, yeah, uh, grant writers.
Morning commissioners, Cheryl Potts on behalf of the grant writers. Permission to advertise for the twenty twenty-five CDBG second hearing and five oh four grievance procedure hearing. This hearing will take place on Wednesday, October second, twenty twenty-five, at eleven AM, the commissioners' boardroom. Permission to advertise for a CDBG street rehab project in the borough of Tamahua. This will be done via pen bid and must be submitted by nine AM on Wednesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-five, at which time they will be opened. Next award contract in the amount of seventy-two thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars to Lehigh Asphalt Paving and Construction Company. For a CDBG street rehab project at Schmoken Street, Butler Township. And the next two are to award contracts to MNJ Excavation Incorporated, the first is forty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. For a CDBG street rehab project at Jarden Street Shenandoah. Twenty-five thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty cents will be from CDBG funding. Twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty cents will be funded by the Borough of Shenandoah. Uh, their other contract for fifty thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars is for a CDBG street rehab project at Market Street Shenandoah. Forty-five thousand five hundred dollars and eighty cents will be from CDBG funding. Five thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents will be funded by the Borough. The next three are all contracts for affordable construction and demo LLC. First is sixty-three thousand three hundred and forty dollars for a demo project at twenty-five West Ogden Street, Gerardville. Second, forty thousand dollars for a demo project at four-one Willing Street, Tamahua. And the third is six thousand eight hundred dollars for a demo project at one thirty-seven to one thirty-nine East Pole Street, Shenandoah. And finally, award contract in the amount of twenty-three thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars to CAT contracting for a demo project at two fourteen South Third Street, St. Clair. Thank you.
Public services.
Good morning, I have two items, the first is a recommendation that the board of commissioners approves, a program funded contract with Spuko Community Action. Fotsill for Outreach Case Management Services for the period July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, with a contract cap of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Second is a recommendation that the board approves the completion and submission of the application for the state purchase program for the period July first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, and I am asking for action.
I'll make that motion to approve the, uh, the, the program, but. Second question.
Commissioner Polora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Thank you.
I want to engage with staff.
Morning, two items for consideration next week, first one's a agreement with pay schedule or neighborhood Illinois for scheduling software, one-year term, September one, August thirty-first. Uh, costs will be twenty-two hundred and forty dollars. And the second one is motion, uh, next week to enter an agreement with Invictus Prepared Emergency Communication Services in New York. Uh, ability to use ten user licenses for prepared assist, twenty-five user licenses for on scene, and the term of that agreement was July one, uh, twenty twenty-five to June thirty, twenty twenty-six. And that cost is nine thousand three seventy-five. Thanks.
Morning, questions?
Paul Rumble, children, you. We're requesting approval of an addendum to the current agreement with Dynamic Council Associates LLC, Eastern Pennsylvania. This addendum extends the term period of that agreement for an additional fiscal year at current rates and terms, adjusting the end date to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. We have, uh, four agreements, each with a term July one, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. First of those is a summit with Summit Academy in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, the community-based residential services with per diem rates as follows. Uh, their residential program is at two hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-seven cents, drug and alcohol treatment program is at three hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Their shelter programming is at three hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-three cents, the diagnostic is at three hundred and seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Their specialized settings programming is at four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-five cents, the enhanced support program is at one thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars per diem. Uh, second, Community Specialist Corporation of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, this is, uh, uh, this provider is essentially the, the same as Summit Academy, but the, their girls programming. They also offer community-based residential services, and the per diem rates are as follows. New outlook at, uh, program is at three hundred forty-three dollars and forty-five cents, drug and alcohol at four hundred dollars and nine cents. Their shelter program is at four hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents, specialized settings is at four hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-one cents. The enhanced support program is at one thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars per diem. We are looking at an agreement with Family Care for Children and Youth Incorporated out of Milton. Uh, they offer foster care services, and the per diem rates are as follows, for each range is zero to three, sixty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. Age range three to twenty-one, it's at seventy-seven dollars and eighteen cents. Their kinship program for all ages is at seventy dollars and forty-three cents. They offer medical foster care programming levels one through four, uh, with rates ranging from thirty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents to sixty-two dollars and, at sixty-five dollars and twenty cents. And finally, they also operate in home, homemaker services with an hourly rate of seventy-eight dollars and three cents. Also, we are requesting an agreement with Lifespan Family Services of P A, based in Punxsutawney. Uh, they offer foster care services, and their per diem rates are as follows, traditional is at seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents. Behaviorally challenged and medically needy, both programs at ninety-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. Emergency placement and respite levels of care are at ninety-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Kinship is at eighty-five dollars per diem, parenting youth, uh, foster care programs at one hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-six cents. Transitioning teens, one hundred and ten dollars and twenty-one cents, and complex cases, uh, level of foster care service is at one hundred and eighty dollars. Finally, we have two agreements each with a two-year term period beginning July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Uh, first of those is with Pathways Adolescent Center of Oil City, that they offer residential services and transitional living services, and the per diem rates are as follows. Pathways program is at one fifteen, uh, new beginnings is at three hundred and thirty dollars, transitional living program is at three hundred and five dollars. Emergency shelter program is at six hundred and fifteen dollars, and complex case, uh, level of residential care is at one thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, finally, we, uh, have an agreement with the Red Coat Group, which does business as Clarvita of Potsville, Pennsylvania, uh, more commonly known as the Family Support Unit. They operate in home prevention, reunification, truancy and diversionary services, uh, under quarter-hour unit rates, and they are as follows. Case management counseling, intensive case management, parent education program, supervised visitation, and truancy intervention parenting program are each at twenty-three dollars and ninety-three cents per unit. Seed mentoring is at twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents per unit. The group, uh, component of the seed program is at twelve dollars and twenty-seven cents per unit. Collateral services are at twenty-one dollars and two cents per unit, is at sixteen dollars and twenty-six, uh, cents per unit. And their administrative rate is at ten dollars and fifty-two cents per unit, with the flat fee for no-shows at thirty dollars.
Let me see, the tax system items, uh, withdrawn. Charges report.
With the ICS Spookham County Treasurer, the July twenty twenty-five treasurer's report, ending balance in all accounts, uh, one hundred and two million four hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and fifteen cents.
Thank you. Controller's office?
Nothing, Jeff.
Finance office.
Uh, just, uh, three items for your consideration, uh, close to our floor, informational purposes only, commissioner, question recreation budget adjusted to five hundred, given resource to sixty thousand, and then immediate approval is requested for supplemental budget reservation twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, and we got a order of sixty thousand dollars.
The most, move the whole concern, second, any questions?
Commissioner Padorak?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes. And administration, and, and current human resource.
Yes, good morning commissioners, uh, in the prison, there are three items, two transfers from, um, part-time to full-time, those are Stephen discarding and Joel Florida, Santa, the rate is twenty-five point four three eight zero, effective date forty-five twenty-five. And also promotion of Hunter Hatnick to lieutenant, rate is eighty thousand dollars, effective nine eight twenty-five, he's coming from a correction officer. There is one informational line in the controller's office, the promotion Megan Felty to payroll specialist, effective nine two twenty-five, coming from interim payroll specialist training. All equipment spending, drug tests and physical where appropriate, all actions involving salary or, or positions being created are pending salary board approval.
Now, welcome for the two person transfer, so, second, other question?
Commissioner Padorak?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes. Any new business? Salary, permanent, executive sessions?
There were none.
No? Public comment for salary board? Sure. In the resource office, personnel actions?
Uh, in the controller's office, eliminate the position of payroll specialist, deputy deputy, effective nine two twenty-five, also in controller's, eliminate the position of interim payroll specialist training, nine two twenty-five. Also, in controller's office, create the position of payroll specialist, effective nine two twenty-five, and set salary for the payroll specialist. Nine two twenty-five is effective date, the rate is twenty-three point one five seven five, and in the prison, set salary for Hunter Hatnick as lieutenant at eighty thousand, effective nine eight twenty-five, that is all.
Uh, any others, I, I guess actually this was back in the mission meeting, I attended CCAB this last week up at Somerset County. One of the sessions about healthcare issues, and I was surprised, I mean, we're very fortunate to be in Spookham County with Lehigh Valley, and with St. Louis Dysinger. In Chester County, since last year's time, their healthcare network up there gave forty-eight hours notice and shut down four hospitals at once. And caused the, just a major, major commotion in Chester, Sullivan County, uh, anybody up there, you have to drive pretty far to the hospital, but they had a primary care unit in the county, it shut down, and now there's just a area size Rhode Island has no maternity coverage. So they're, they're scrambling like the heck trying to get, you know, primary care and, and urgent care, so, my point was that we're very fortunate to have this support we have, the. With the hospitals, yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I was, basically, especially Chester County, they come on a Friday, Monday morning, and the four hospitals have closed down, so. Thank you. We're welcome here, is there anything else on the new business?